Welcome. I wanted to thank the candidates again for being here. The format, so this is not a debate, this is a forum. Like Paul said, all the questions were received from chamber membership. And then as we go through, all candidates will answer a selected number of questions, and will be given 60 or 90 seconds to answer the question. Please honor the time allotted. If not, your mic will be cut and we'll move on. I will randomly select the person to start. All right. Ms. Brightman, you'll have 90 seconds for this. What do you think the most important part of your job on the Board of Education should be? And what qualities and/or skills do you possess that will make the Board of Education more successful?
I think I'm going to start with finance. The school system is the most audited, most measured, most accountable, most effective, and most efficient governmental entity in the county. Over the last 10 years, we've absorbed $20 million in cuts from the county, and at the same time, we've given 10 steps and salary increases to all of our employees. At the same time, we were able to pay $11 million on capital projects without any additional money from the county but through savings, quarterly adjustments. And I would say if board members don't understand finance, don't come to the board's service with finance background, knowledge, or the ability or willingness to learn about finance, it makes most of their job very difficult, and I don't think serves the county well. So I would say finance is a skill that I bring to the board.
Ms. Williams, you'll have 90 seconds.
Skills. Let me begin with character traits. I have skills, definitely, as an educator. I'm retired public school administrator and teacher, 35 years in Washington County Public Schools. And I bring to my job, I believe, an understanding of pedagogy, of curriculum, of policy, and a desire to want to serve my county by bringing that skill set. Character traits, I'm a, by nature, I'm very inquisitive, and I listen. And I think it's important that board members listen. I think it's important that board members are willing to learn. Yes, we do bring skills and traits to our job, but there's lots of opportunity to further develop those skills, and I have the willingness to do so.
Mr. Bickford?
Hunger Games. Yeah, exactly. One of the things I think is my, would be my role, or one of my goals as a board member, is just to continue to keep the school system on the right path, which it can, I've been very impressed. One of the reasons I decided to run is because I think, having grown up in the school system, and then having watched my daughter go through it, that it is an excellent school system, certainly one of the best in the state. We have many things to brag about, from the iPad initiative to our specialized schools, so that children can learn in environments that fit them the best. I think skills that I bring to this is just one that I'm very involved in the community. Certainly, I can be a bridge between the school board and the city council and the county commissioners. I certainly know that, you know, it's been out in the public, that there's been tensions on the school board, and people get sick of hearing this, but my mom always said I'd be a good diplomat, because I tend to listen to all sides and also hear both sides. Being a journalist, you have to be objective and get to know both sides of the issue, and that's one of my strengths, is I can weigh both sides and make the right decision.
Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I have a very strong background in public education. I'm a product of the Washington County Public Schools. When my children started school, I was a volunteer. I helped in the classroom. I went on field trips. I was in the PTA, I was the PTA president. When they went to middle school, I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee. When they went to high school, I was one of the band boosters. So I followed them through. And then I became an employee. And I worked in the public school system for 26 years, retiring July 1st. I have a passion for the Washington County Public Schools. I know things are working well, and I want to continue to help them work well. I want to work with the people on this board, and I want to see the future of the Washington County schools be productive. So, thank you.
Mr. Stauffer, 90 seconds.
Hello? Okay, oh, nine, okay. First time I've ever won by a drawing, by being so far down, and getting a chance to listen to what everyone else has said. First of all, I think the traits that I bring to this Board of Education are the fact that I walked into teachers' shoes for 37 years in the classroom. I think that's very important if you're going to be on the Board of Education. You have to know and understand and realize what teachers go through day after day, week after week, month after month. You've got to have those lesson plans, you've got to have varied ways to do instruction, you have to put up with rules and regulations, which sometimes you didn't have a say, and so forth. I bring high character traits. I'm very honest, I'm very frank with people, and I think I can work with just about anybody, as I did for 42 years. The budget, as Mrs. Brightman said, is important, but I don't think that's the key thing. If that's so important, there has to be more than two work sessions, which is what the board held last year on the budget, from what I remember. I think two one and a half hour work session, might have been three. So, there are a lot of different things. I will tell you this, I'm a fast learner. What I don't know about being a board member, I will learn, because I will ask questions about things. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, 90 seconds.
Wayne and I were just saying it's the two of us left. Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here, appreciate you all coming out this morning. I have been involved in community service practically my whole career. Started in public accounting, got my CPA certificate, and I've been fortunate to find gainful employment, first with the town of Hancock, then with the city of Hagerstown as their chief financial officer. Our finances are extremely important at the school board, it's our largest governmental body. But I would say that perhaps the biggest trait that I bring to the board is a desire for community service. I've been fortunate to make my career in that, and in my retirement now, I'm staying very active in the community and a variety of organizations. Washington County is a great place to live and work and to raise a family. Our school system is an extremely important part of that, and something that I think we're at a defining moment in its future direction. And I want to be part of helping make sure that we learn from our successes in the past, but that we stay relevant and pertinent and important in the future. I think technology is an important part of that, engaging students, finding new ways of doing things that build on our old successes, but incorporate new ideas. Distance learning, I think, is going to become an increasingly important part of engaging students. If students aren't engaged, we're spending a lot of money, and they're not going to be getting the skills they need to be successful in life.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenauer?
Thank you, yes, as the last person. I believe I have been a teacher. I was a teacher for 30 years. But in the last 13 years, I've worked in the private sector. And that's given me a different perspective on my board service and on education and the workforce, the private workforce also. So I think that skill, or that trade, or that experience has taught me a lot. My best trade, I guess the biggest trade I see, I've been on the board now for 12 years. I'm very committed to my work, and I also am very committed to Washington County Public Schools. During that time, I've missed one meeting. And I think that speaks to, you know, my commitment to what I'm doing there. I have a willingness to learn, and I have a willingness to learn from the past, look at it and see what works, but also have a vision to look in the future. Things are changing rapidly in the world. We have to stay on top of that. We cannot, you know, look to the past and say, "Oh, the good old days." We can't, wish we just could go back there. We really can't go back there. We have to see what's going on and make sure that we continue to move the system forward and meet changes and challenges as they appear to us. So I hope I get the opportunity to continue to do that. It's been my honor to do it up to this point.
The next question, three candidates will be randomly selected to answer. So I will start with the first one. Mr. Martin, you'll have 60 seconds. The question is, "In a global economy, how do we ensure that Washington County students will be regionally and globally competitive in the workforce in the coming years?"
I think the important thing there is that we need to look, we are in a global economy, whether we realize it or not. Times have changed, the world is a lot smaller. Our industries that were successful here in the United States in the past aren't as competitive as they used to be. I think that will change. But the key we need to be looking at is we need to be visionary, and looking at where do we see our workforce development needs going? Where are the opportunities for gainful employment and helping students in our system get important life skills? We need to figure out, how do we get those small learning communities developed, whether it is in tech ed, whether it is in technology, whatever it is, knowledge-based skills, artificial intelligence? We need to be looking at those future trends and learning from that.
Mr. Stauffer, 60 seconds.
Well, I would just say this, I think the important job of the instructing, especially at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, I think what's important is to give students a good base. I think in a global economy, I don't think a high school education and a diploma is going to make it anymore. You're going to have to go on. That's why I would support extension of classes at HCC and so forth, international baccalaureate and this type of thing. So I would hope that we give them a good base with the high school, but I think students in this generation are going to have to go on and get education beyond high school.
Ms. Brightman, 60 seconds.
Thank you. This is a great subject. I would suggest all of you pick up a book called Industries of the Future, written by Alex Ross. And in there, there's a great dialogue on the transformation that technology has brought and is bringing to our world, our workforce, how we live and how we do education. And we need to be preparing our students for that world. It's not a one-size-fits-all. We need to customize, we need to allow teachers to learn the concept of immersive technology, using it to enhance their instruction and to inform, so the students become digital literate and digital natives and are able to go out in the world and actually be competitive. Thank you.
So, the following question, we'll have four randomly selected candidates. Mr. Bickford, you'll have 60 seconds. The question is, "Given that Washington County is ranked lowest in the state for kindergarten readiness, and given that pre-K funding has been cut, what steps should be taken to bolster pre-K education and ensure kindergarten readiness for our students?"
Well, I think some steps are already underway. You know, one of the, one of the difficult parts is learning that we were the lowest in the state, but I think that's called attention to the problem, similar to the teen pregnancy rate in recent years. It does bother me that pre-K funding is, has been cut. I would certainly like to explore ways to expand or tap into more Title I opportunities. Apparently, there's a lot of funding out there that we've been denied, that we're now actively working to fight for, because Head Start seems to be an excellent way to help to solve that problem. I'm also really impressed that there's a big community effort underway to tackle it. You have churches around the area, you have the Bester Community of Hope, all banding together to hold learning parties, parenting parties at the various churches like mine. This is a community effort, it's not just the school systems alone to solve, and I think that that process is already underway.
Ms. Murray, 60 seconds.
I agree with Peter, the community has been involved, and that's very helpful. I think if we look at the budget and can find some money for some more need-based pre-Ks, that would be a conversation that I would like to have. It's not, the money's not always there, I understand that. The governor says that there'll be funds from the, from this new initiative that would extend summer, so maybe we can get some of those funds, hopefully. But yes, I am a proponent of pre-kindergarten. I'm a kindergarten tutor at this time in two different schools, so I know the need is there, so we need to look at this problem.
Ms. Williams, 60 seconds.
Yes, I agree that this is a community effort. I think this is something that we all recognize, the importance of early learning. And I see, as a board member, my role to advocate for funding by working with our commissioners, by working with our delegation, seeking out grants, and investigating the possibility of public-private partnerships. I think that the time is now to find ways in which we can offer pre-K to all those who are interested, and I hope that as a community, we can get behind that.
Mr. Reidenauer, 60 seconds.
I think it's easy to say we can look for more money, but the bottom line is, we don't have it right now. And we have to find ways to address this with the funds that we have available. We have, for the past few years, worked on summer opportunities with our communities and our students in an effort to get them involved, to get them a little jump start. The biggest thing, and it's been mentioned by others, is working with families and communities in an effort to let them understand the importance of this early childhood education, to get them involved and get them excited about it. With that in place, or the opportunity, or the efforts with them, I believe that's where we have to work. Right now, we don't have the money to do pre-K for every kid, we don't have the money to...
Thank you. So, before I move on, I seem to have a case of the Trump sniffles, so if anyone could grab me a napkin or something, that'd be great. So, the next question, all candidates will have an opportunity to answer. I will select a name to begin. Mr. Reidenauer, you'll have 60 seconds to answer this. The question is, "While personal agendas can exist on any board, what specifically will you do to ensure collaboration and cooperation among all of the stakeholders, as noted in a Herald Mail article recently?"
Well, it depends on, if you're talking about fellow board members, I think we've got to understand that you're going to have differences. There are always going to be differences among board members. The understanding is that once a decision is made, is to move forward and not, not take it personally, or not to attack the person who may have voted differently than you. Getting others involved, we have worked very hard, very hard, to try to get the community involved, and try to get, let the community know what we are doing and get input. You know, we've upgraded our website on numerous occasions, we have a lot of different ways through Twitter and Facebook and anything else to get input from people, and then we've got to continue that. We've got to look at it, measure it, understand what the community's looking for and what their ideas are, and then try to implement them or put them in with our vision. And I think that can be done very easily. It's not as bad as it might seem.
Mr. Bickford, 60 seconds.
I know this is a major concern. When I'm out on the campaign trail, people ask this of me quite a bit. One of the things that I've done is gotten to know current board members and the candidates, and so far, I like what I see. It sounds like there's healthy discussions in board meetings that sometime get, that sometimes get personal. Part of the problem is now we live in a social media age where it's so easy to, for people to immediately go on and have immediate opinions, and I think that's hard. I know it'll be hard for me, and it's hard for every sitting member of the school board, because they're all here for one reason, and that's for education. They all took that leap to run for office. So I think you've just got to give everybody a fair chance, you have to listen to all sides. You have to realize that sometimes a no vote is with the best of intentions and actually improves, improves the yes vote later, if that makes sense. So I'm with Wayne, I don't think the problem is as bad as it would seem in the public.
Ms. Brightman, 60 seconds.
Thank you. I have nine and a half years of a strong record on collaboration, and I'll give you three examples. One is sitting to my left, Mr. Reidenauer. When I first came on the board, I would say that Mr. Reidenauer, Mr. Reidenauer and I disagreed on many things. And I would say it got personal from time to time. We put that aside, and we have learned to work together in a very productive way. Secondly, in the county, I work with a lot of individuals, elected officials. Commissioner Kiefer came to me and asked me to help facilitate a meeting with Dr. Wilcox and staff in Hancock, and I was able to do that. And at the state level, I've been able to work with Senator Sarafini and the governor's office on alternative funding and financing for school construction that would help with our public-private partnerships back home.
Ms. Murray, 60 seconds.
Over my career, I've had to work under five principals and eight assistant principals. I went into classrooms, several different classrooms, every day, and worked with different teachers who had different teaching styles, different methods. And I can say I honestly enjoyed every bit of it. I'm a people person, I like to listen to others' ideas, they help me be a better person. I, my major strengths on all of my evaluations were that I'm very capable, knowledgeable about instruction, I am very professional, I have, I'm very much a team player, contribute much to the overall morale, and positive school atmosphere that exists at Salem Ave, this was at Salem Avenue. So I feel very confident that I could come on this board and contribute, and get along with everybody, and learn from them.
Mr. Martin, 60 seconds.
I'm a big believer that civility is the way that we get things done in a civilized society. I think one needs to build trust and transparency among each other. It's challenging in a situation where you're going to serve together on a governing board or any organization as a team, if you're putting each other down on a campaign trail, outside of the office place, or wherever. None of us in business would be able to have an effective business relationship if we were denigrating and insulting our customers. We need to work well together. It's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable about it. Let's be civil, do our business, and work together on a common, shared vision. If we don't have that common, shared vision, let's work together to facilitate, how do we figure that out? And how do we get someplace that we're able to do what's needed to move the community forward?
Mr. Stauffer, 60 seconds.
Well, I hate to see all the newspaper articles about the fractured board, I think that doesn't help, excuse me, the issue. But there have been fractures on school boards here in the county for years. I can remember, I can't remember what board it was, but it seems to me back in the 90s or something, things on the board were so bad, they had to hire a manners doctor or something to come in and, and kind of be a mediator. A little fuzzy on that, but somewhere in my head, I have that idea. Collaboration is a reciprocal process. You've got to learn to work together. I will tell you, I'm sitting up here, I've had differences with these people, but I try to stay above the fray. I've worked with all kinds of people through the years. I try not to hold grudges and so forth, but it can be worked out.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I have no personal agenda, other than wanting to see all students in our school system succeed. My agenda is to move forward the board's created vision. And yes, civility is important, trust and respect, definitely important. I think our board members bring different strengths, and I think all too frequently we overlook those strengths, and members have been marginalized. I think that we can work together if we are respectful and trusting and truly focused on what's best for the students.
Mr. Bickford? You'll have 60 seconds to answer. The question is, "By all accounts, Barbara Ingraham School appears to be a successful initiative for WCPS and its students, as an innovative and non-traditional educational environment. When is it appropriate to do things differently than we have in the past?"
Okay. Well, full disclosure, I was on the, I'm a big supporter of Barbara Ingraham, I was on the founding, the original foundation that helped raise money for it. I was the co-chair of the project downtown, and that's the reason we have those lovely butterflies and hot air balloons scattered around our county. When I moved away from Hagerstown and came back, it was a project that was just getting underway, and I was so impressed, because when I was a student at North High, I was a member of the arts, and so it would have been, I was thinking what I have gone there if I'd had this option. I think one of the reasons it works is because you allow students to tap into their passions. We do that at tech high school, we do that with the ag program, we do that with the public service academies. Students are passionate about something, and then they tend, the academics tend to follow, and they're rigorous academics, and so far, the experiment seems to be working, so I say let's continue.
Mr. Martin, 60 seconds.
I'm a big believer in small learning communities. I think they help us engage students in ways they wouldn't be engaged otherwise. I know, I support Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts, I'm currently the foundation board chair of the Bisva Foundation, and been on the board now six years. My own background, I wasn't very athletic. For me, drama club and the arts were a way to help me find myself and to feel comfortable in my own skin. I think it also helped me learn some valuable team-building skills, and it helped me be successful in high school and later in life. I think we see that in Bisva and the test scores there, and the way the kids interact with each other, the successes that our graduates have had in going on to college and careers, or whatever they choose to do in life. And I think we need to expand those opportunities to others, whether it be the Public Safety Academy, other professional or affinity groups, it's very important.
Ms. Brightman, 60 seconds.
I would be in serious trouble if I didn't use an example of a small learning community that represents fire and rescue in our public service academy. We have, I think, four individuals in the room from the association, and I will acknowledge them. This is really what 21st century education is all about. The Public Service Academy, we now have 28 cadets this year. They will graduate in two years, they will be certified, they will be able to go anywhere in this country and get a high-paying job. They can, while they're cadets, they have to be volunteering at a local fire and rescue station in our county. This is all about civic, community, and education at the same time, and that's the goal standard of 21st century education.
Ms. Murray, 60 seconds. Ms. Murray, 60 seconds.
Well, I definitely would agree with everyone here that the Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts is a great success. The class sizes are small. The students are very focused on their studies. And I think the other, the service academies, the Public Service Academy is a great example. These small learning communities are very important because they help the students. First of all, they're focused on where they want to go, and they will graduate and go on to something that they are very interested in. So I am a big supporter of these small learning communities.
Ms. Williams, 60 seconds.
Yes. I too am a believer in small learning communities. And yes, Biswa is certainly a successful example, a successful example of a small learning community. And I believe moving forward in the future, should we wish to create more, that we should do a great deal of planning, give it a great deal of thought, to make sure that we're having a sound curriculum, that we're using our resources well, and that we're keeping in mind the funds that are coming from the taxpayers to fund these things. I think each and every student can benefit by a small learning community and a situation where they are focused on things that are of great interest to them.
Mr. Stauffer, 60 seconds.
Okay. Well, Biswa has been successful, but then, quite honestly, all the students are handpicked, so they should be. One of the things I've run into on the campaign trail, I've run into three people who had children or grandchildren who were denied entrance to Biswa. They're now juniors and seniors. Two of them, or one of them at least, is in the International Baccalaureate Program at North High. But the question was asked to me, why are we denying access to students from this county when we allow students to fill slots in there from other counties and so forth? Small learning communities, one of the things we need to do is address class size in all the schools and so forth. That can be a small learning community. Fine arts are taught in all the schools. I think we should remember that. I think budgetary concerns need to be addressed when we're looking at this issue. And I would advise people that change just for the sake of change is not always the best route to follow.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenhour?
I'll start with the last part of the question, which said, when is it appropriate to do things differently? I think it's always appropriate to do things differently if change is needed. I don't think you just sit on one thing and continue to do it the way it's been done for 100 years. I will say, I'm trying to do this quickly. Frederick County right now is building $120 million high school. We can't do that. So we have to look at things and try to find different ways to make certain that our students are engaged. Biswa is one of those. I've been a part of that since its inception, and I feel very strongly about its success. I feel strongly about the success of the public service academies, of the IB program, and others. Small learning communities, engaging students. If you want kids to learn, that's what you have to do. So Barbara Ingraham, just as a point of clarity, those students are admitted on their talent. Nobody ever, no teacher looks at their record.
Ms. Williams, you'll have 60 seconds. And the question is, do you support an open shop to join the teachers' union, as is currently, or a closed shop which would make joining the teachers' union mandatory? Why or why not?
I support having discussions surrounding the possibility of agency fee. No, I would, under no circumstances, support a closed shop.
Ms. Brightman, 60 seconds.
Thank you. The General Assembly passed legislation in 2013 that made it a requirement for public employers and public employees to negotiate a representation fee. And there's a process in place where a board and the WCTA, the Teachers Association, would negotiate that. If a fee is negotiated, that has to be ratified by members and non-members. And the association would have to prove to the non-members that they have a reason for needing that fee, and the non-members could challenge that in court. So there is a process in place that would help protect the First and Fourteenth Amendment rights of non-members on this issue.
Ms. Murray, 60 seconds.
I'm going to explain this a little bit differently. Everybody knows somebody that complains about the government. And you'll say, well, how did you vote? Oh, I don't vote. That's the way it is with the union. The people that pay the dues have the people that are going in there, negotiating contracts, getting things that are needed. But then the ones that don't pay anything just get all the benefit. So, no, not everyone should have to be a full-fledged member of the union, but I would like to see an agency fee so that everybody is contributing to the benefit of all.
Mr. Reidenhour, 60 seconds.
Thank you. This won't take 60 seconds. I mean, I support the legal right of the association to negotiate. That is in law. Now we are in a position where we can negotiate whether or not there is an agency fee or a user fee, whatever the case might be. I do not support it. I do not support it. I believe, and I was a member of the association for 26 out of 30 years, I believe that every member has a right with his dollars to illustrate to the leadership of that group that they support or don't support what they are doing and how they are doing it. So for that reason, I've never believed that that is something that should be mandated upon our employees.
Mr. Stauffer?
Well, first of all, it's something that I definitely would look at. It is the law that in Maryland that you can have it. Washington County does not have it. I don't like the use of the terms open and closed shop. When I had labor history and so forth back in college, a closed shop was a shop where you had to be a member of the union before you could even apply for a job at a place and so forth. If you're getting benefits from the association, I think it would be something to look at to help pay your fair share. I was a union rep, association rep, for many, many years, and the biggest complainers were those who didn't belong to the association. Every time something happened, they would be the ones who would say, what's the association going to do about it? And I'd just look at them and say, well, you didn't join and so forth.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, 60 seconds.
Obviously, as elected officials, if we're successful in being on the board, we have to comply with the law. The reality is, though, that I think this really is a question of equity and fairness. At the city, we worked with four different unions in my 30-year career there. They were effective partners in getting things done, particularly in a situation where you were dealing with an elected board. There was a system of checks and balances there. I'm a believer that while certainly people have a right to choose if they want to belong to a union or a trade group or not, I think it's a question of fairness. If they're being represented and benefiting from the actions of that group on their behalf, they should participate in some way, and the agency fee is a way to do that if they don't choose membership. To me, everyone benefits. If 20% of the membership or potential membership isn't a member, that means the ones that are are paying too much, and you could cut the rates that are needed to support that by that amount of lack of membership.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
Here's my wishy-washy answer, but I have to say this was not on my radar when I first got the question from Washington County Teachers Association in the questionnaire about the Friedrich case. I went, who's Friedrich and what's this all about? And had, I think, go to Wikipedia and start researching it. Last time we got the question about fair share, and I went, what? So I've been asking questions. I'm hearing both sides. I'm hearing wonderful arguments on both sides of the issue. I have been a member of a closed shop when I was a reporter and anchor at WBAL Radio. It was a member of SAG-AFTRA, and you could not work there if you were not a member of the union, and part of my salary immediately went to that. So I have some experience with the unions. So I'm not really ready to say if I support it or not. It's still one of those things. I certainly know that they have a legal right to bring it up at bargaining, and so I guess we'll have to tackle that when it does come before us. But there's my wishy-washy answer.
The following question, two candidates will have the opportunity to answer. Ms. Williams, you'll have 60 seconds. And the question is, do you view the board of WCPS as an economic partner and player with the city and county? Why or why not?
Do I view WCPS as an economic player?
Partner and player with the city and county.
Partner and player. Definitely, yes. Partner. Capital P. Why? Because I think that the school system is an important part, if not the most important part, of our community. I think it has an effect on the housing market. I think our employees fuel the economy here in Washington County, and I think that I think our county depends a lot on the things that happen within the school system and benefits by the employees and the
Thank you. Ms. Brightman, 60 seconds.
Washington County school system has a $300 million budget. We're the largest employer in the county. We are a natural partner and player in the county, and I would say we're the natural leader in the county. 33% of our schools are in the city limits, and in fact, that's why I came to the council forum here last Wednesday, so I could have a sense of what the council makeup would be going forward after the election. The return on investment of education dollars is significant, whether it's operating dollars that go to salaries, and those salary dollars go out into the community, or whether it's construction dollars that go out into the community. There's no other way to say it. We are players and partners and leaders in the county.
Thank you. The following question, again, will have two candidates, and you'll have 60 seconds to answer. Ms. Murray, 60 seconds. And the question is, do you support the proposed construction and expansion of the urban improvement project downtown? If not, why not? If so, how will you build consensus in support of the project?
I do support the joint efforts that are already in place by the Washington County Public Schools, Washington County Commissioners, and Senator Sarafini to build what is known as the downtown hub or downtown revitalization program. It will provide much-needed space that will be jointly used by the Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts and the University System of Maryland. I think that to build support for that, I think the newspaper keeps the public very informed on county issues, as well as does the Washington County Public Schools on their social media. But I would also say that we could go out into the community and have small conversations with the community, ask if they have any questions, explain what's going on, to keep them informed and keep them up to date on the project. Thank you.
Mr. Bickford, 60 seconds.
Yes, I'm as excited about this project as I was about the iPad Initiative and the Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts. We've been trying for years to see what will change downtown. And guess what's changing downtown? Education. When they expanded the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, when they brought Barbara Ingraham downtown, traffic picked up. Restaurants are successful. So I'm so glad to see that the process is underway to grow that. It was exciting for me to see that the governor is supporting it. Obviously, there are some financial issues we're going to have to tackle. But what a brilliant move to bring the governor to town and have him at a cabinet meeting. I'm not sure if it was his idea or somebody else's suggestion, right at the Maryland Theater, right in the heart of this major project. I think you're going to see some activity in the coming months and years.
Thank you. The following question, three candidates will have the opportunity to answer. Mr. Martin, 60 seconds. And the question is, during the last round of labor negotiations, the current board became directly involved in those negotiations. Do you think direct involvement in the labor negotiation process is an appropriate role for the board?
I think if needed, it needs to happen, but my first support would be that it be worked out at the staff level. The Board of Education is like a board of directors of a large corporation. Our role is to hire the superintendent as the CEO of our organization. It's up to the superintendent, then, to hire the staff necessary to manage the operation. And our teachers are extremely important, but the role is to work with the existing staff. I think I've seen opportunities and situations at the city where elected official involvement has complicated the process. To me, we need to leave it up to the professionals, and it needs to be done on a professional basis. We should be looking at independent wage and benefit studies. We ought to know what is going on in the region, and we need to make sure that we are competitive in those wages to make sure that we're retaining our good staff and that we're attracting qualified new staff.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, 60 seconds.
This won't take long. I think the answer is, when necessary, yes. I think the elected board should give guidance for our negotiating goals when it's necessary and so forth. I think the elected board should have stepped in and said on the idea of planning time, there was a compromise that was possible. Having said that, I don't know with the governor's mandate, then, to start school after Labor Day, those early dismissal days could have been instituted into the calendar. So that's what I think.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenhour, 60 seconds.
I want to make sure that I understood this correctly. When we speak about directly involved, there's the image that the board's out there at the bargaining table. That is absolutely not our role. And we were not directly involved in that respect, in that regard. What our job is as a board is to give direction to our staff as to what we want to see in the negotiating process. What do we want to see negotiated at the table? And then turn it over, as was said to Mr. Martin stated, turn it over to the professionals, people who do that and understand that as something they do for a living. So we have not, you know, I think that's the role. That is the role of the board. I do not want to see board members at the table. I do not want to see them at any point in time speaking to the negotiations outside of our own closed sessions where we develop our goals for the upcoming year during negotiations.
Thank you. So the final question, and could also double as your closing remarks, why should we vote for you? Yes, so we're going to give you two minutes to answer this, correct? Two minutes.
I was a WCPS educator for 42 years, and during that time, I did many, many things. I strove for educational excellence, and my Board of Education candidacy strives for continuation of seeking that. This election is about moving forward and not backward. We need Board of Education members whose practical knowledge has shaped a vision for moving us forward. And so these are my goals as a board member. I want to see students provided with the educational opportunities to prepare them for living and working in the 21st century, but also to instill in them a sense of civic duty and pride in our nation's past. I want to ensure that educational budgets are carefully devised and implemented. I want to ensure that educational budgets are carefully devised and implemented in an age of declining enrollment, increasing mandate overloads, and rising costs. Equip students and teachers with modern technology while realizing that technology can never replace a competent and caring teacher in the classroom, and that technology is just one tool in a teacher's instructional toolkit. I want to see that, work with the understanding that small class sizes, less disruption to instruction, and parent involvement are keys to quality education. Advocate that educational change, just for the sake of change, is not always good, and that educational change must be preceded by proper planning to ensure thoughtful implementation. And last, but not least, I want to see that civility, integrity, and transparency are respoored to the elected Washington County Board of Education. And I would say to this, to give an example of the transparency, when I spoke against the extension of the superintendent's contract here recently, a few months ago, I made mention of the fact that in 2015, it wasn't on the public agenda. And the response was, that I got, was that they were responding to criticism that they received and trying to be more transparent, and that's why it was on the agenda in 2016.
Ms. Brightman, two minutes.
Thank you. The Washington County school system has made so much progress in the last nine and a half years that I've served on it and with leadership with Dr. Wilcox. We're on the verge of going from good to great. And the reason I ran again was to help ensure that forward motion. I stand on my record of competency. I bring a business background to my role as a board member. My record of collaboration, not only at the local level, but at the state level. I bring compassion or heart to the role of a board member and the concern with poverty in this community. And I would say also that my service on the Kerwin Commission, my recent appointment, there's only 25 people in the state serving on that commission that will set education policy and funding for the foreseeable future in Maryland. There are only three members from Western Maryland on that commission, and I'm one of them. We need a voice from Western Maryland and Washington County on that commission for our future. The other reason I ran is because all it's going to take is one more vote, and this county and the school system could very well go backwards. Thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour, two minutes.
Thank you. It has been my privilege to serve the students and citizens of Washington County for the past 12 years. I take this responsibility seriously. I've come prepared to our meetings by requesting needed information ahead of time, asking questions during meeting, which allows me to make informed decisions that have the best interest of our students as my focus. Some people would have stopped moving the system forward based on nostalgia for the good old days. I have supported innovation because it's my desire that our children can have access to things we did not have in the past that they will need in the future. During my 12 years, great things have happened in our system, which I believe have made our children's educational experience, one for which we can all be proud. While I'm certain not every decision I've made has been popular, I ask that you look at the totality of what has occurred. We are entering a time where change is upon us at the blink of an eye. Let's keep moving forward, and I want to have a hand in making each transition as seamless as possible for our students. It's for this reason that I hope you can support me and others who have a similar vision of moving the system forward, not backward. We should never forget that students we educate today will in time look back on their school experiences and call them the good old days.
Yes, thank you. Serving on your school board these past four years has been a privilege and a great responsibility, a responsibility that I've not taken lightly. I believe wholeheartedly in public education, and I've dedicated my life's work to children and their learning. Those of you who know me recognize that I have common sense. I'm reasonable, I'm approachable, I'm hardworking, committed, and ethical. When I undertake something, I do so with the intent to give my all and to do the job right. I'm seeking reelection because I believe that I have a great deal to bring to the table at a time when public education in Washington County faces many challenges. Each and every child in our school system deserves the best, and I'm prepared to stand up for each and every one of them, to see that every student is prepared for the world in which he or she will live. I want to see that each student has the best possible teachers, curriculum, learning environment, and community support. I want them to learn, to experience, to experience success, and to continue to want to learn throughout their lifetime. Nothing I advocate for is for personal benefit. We all benefit from educating our children well. I'm running for reelection to your school board. Should I be reelected, I'll continue to listen to you, work for you, and answer to you. Thank you to the chamber for making this opportunity possible to the candidates, and I thank you, the audience, for your consideration when you vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Ms. Murray, two minutes.
I've spent my entire adult life as an advocate for the Washington County Public Schools. And so after my retirement, I chose to run for the Board of Education. I would like for you to vote for me because I care about the students of Washington County and promise to work alongside Dr. Wilcox, his staff, and the other board members to continue to keep our public school system great. I will be open to ideas from all stakeholders to keep our schools strong. Vote for me because not only will I be a good steward of your child's education, but also of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. I have a long history here in this county. My family's roots go back over 100, 150 years. My dad's home place was Ivy Hill Farm out at Ringle in the Smithburg area, and I've grown up here my entire life, living in the South End. I feel fortunate that I've been able to find gainful employment here in our community in a role that allows, has allowed me to provide a public service. This is my first run for elected office, and people ask me, "Why are you running for the school board? You're retired. Don't you have enough to do?" And that answer is, "Yes, of course I do." But I think, as we've heard this morning, this is probably the most important governmental institution that we have in our community. It's certainly the biggest budget, but that's not really the reason I'm running. I'm running because this board is a governing body of our most precious resource, our 23,000 students. It determines what direction we as a community go and whether we're able to provide kids and future adults with the skills they need to be successful in life. I'm doing this because I look at it as ensuring our community's future, and we all need to be concerned about that. I think everyone up here is dedicated to our children and our community. I think I bring a unique perspective as a CPA, a finance professional with 30-plus years' experience in local government, and a past president of our state finance officers with 850 members all over the state. I got elected to that role by building coalitions and finding a way to work with others throughout the state to get things done. I bring that skill set to this local board. I look forward to getting your vote on November 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
One of the fun parts about running for school board is you start to get really nostalgic. We've been digging up old pictures, finding when I was a student at Winter Street, Western Heights and North High, some of them more embarrassing than others. But it really makes me think about what a privilege it was to get an education in this community. When I started school, we were poor. I lived next to Quarterman's Hardware on the west end of town and walked to Winter Street every day, but I didn't know that I was in a Title I school. I still remember my teachers. It was a great experience. Moving on to Western Heights, we had the opportunity there, because of technology, to do the morning announcements. And I really wanted to be on the air and be that guy that says the morning announcements. Well, lo and behold, years later, I ended up doing the news. So, school, it's just been fascinating to think about what an impact this local school system has had on me. I certainly know that we have our challenges in this area. We still have a large economic gap. And one of my goals, if I am elected, is to make sure that every child is getting the benefits that they deserve in our school system like I did. I moved back to the area to, in part, to raise my daughter in the school system, and I think that's, we were talking about being partners with the county earlier. That's one of the best ways to drive our local economy, is to show people what a great place it was to grow up, and I see many of my friends coming back. So, you know, it's, we can talk about all the things that we've done, all the organizations we're on, but in the end, I think all of us are up here because we believe in education, and I would say that's a good reason to vote for me.
Thank you. That concludes our forum. I'd like to thank all the candidates. You can give them a round of applause. And I'd like to, again, thank our sponsors, Antedom and Jamison Door. Thank you to After Five, and thank you to the audience. That's it.